We're gonna start. All right. We're gonna go ahead and have the pledge. And this is led by Paige Williams. We need to break. We can see what. I'm gonna say this. She said, why we didn't. We're not even to solve. But it's true. It's true. This is the example of the friendship of United cultures.
Tell your guys why you're asking back.
All right. Moving on to item number two. Welcome guests. Reminder, as a word of education, apartment municipal schools on powers of the board lies in action as a public body. As individual members of the board has no authority or power. As the body of the board, the board collectively holds power and responsibility. These powers are exercised transparently during call-in meetings. Some of the key powers and duties of the board include developing educational policies for the school district. In accordance with relevant law and regulations, hire and supervise the superintendent. Review and approve the school district budget, manage property acquisitions, disposal, and maintenance, representing the school district and legal managers. Issuing loans and managing financial resources, providing oversight for the success of each school within the school district. Administrative and operational functions of the school district, such as day-to-day operations, are handled by or under the superintendent and district staff. As a board superintendent and district staff, we do the following collectively. Periodically reviewing and updating policies to align with educational goals and legal requirements. Evaluating the effectiveness of school operations and educational programs. Reminder, board members are in attendance in person. Each board member will identify themselves when speaking. All votes will be by roll call vote. Guests wishing to provide public comment are asked to complete a public comment request form located at the table at the entrance. Card should be placed in the basket at the signing table. As a reminder, comments related to board responsibilities may be passed on to the board for consideration. Comments related to administrative responsibilities or require further investigation may be passed on to administrative personnel for consideration. Personal attacks upon board members, staff, personnel, and other persons in attendance are absent. By individuals who wish to provide public comment are excused. Thus, yes, not thus. Yes, will be called upon under the limits of the forum section of meeting. Guests submitting a form will be acknowledged and will have three minutes to state their comment questions. Question, guest. There we go again. Guests are not allowed to share their time with other guests. Until not more than 30 minutes will be allowed for all the comments. And with that, Ms. Krista Williams, can you do the honor of sharing good things happening in the district?
Yes, thank you guys for being here. FMS, we reopened our doors to close. You 11, our doors to close to 11,000 students this week. We want to thank our families for choosing Farmington Schools. We are happy to announce that 13 recent graduates from Farmington Schools have received the prestigious Chief Menelito Scholarship for 2024, the highest academic honor from the now of the nation. We are incredibly proud of these young scholars and wish them well in the future. As we embark on this new school year, we want to give you a couple of safety highlights. Right before school reopened, FMS completed 21 evacuation drills and discussed important plans for reunification and tracking students and staff during emergencies across our schools. Great job, FMS safety team. Earlier this month, Mr. Bryant Cox was officially sworn in as our second FMS armed campus safety monitor. Mr. Cox will be working with at Farmington High School. He brings more than 20 years of experience in law enforcement, having served within Mexico State Police, the San Juan Sheriff's Office, and the Farmington Police Department. Let's have a great year.
And moving on to item number four, considerations of the agenda.
Madam President, I recommend the board approve the agenda as written.
Right motion. Second. Roll call vote, Ms. Maxwell. I, Ms. Bloom. I, Mr. Corley.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson, aye. Opportunity for guest item number six. Mr. Hatch, we have any?
We're whole cards.
To know more, since you mean, I will move from. Any guests to the next item number. Reports from the superintendent staff and board. Written reports were provided to the board members in our link to this meeting's agenda. Next item number, consent agenda.
Madam President, I recommend the board approve items nine, eight, and nine Q on the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion?
So move, keep forward.
Second. Roll call vote, Ms. Maxwell. I, Ms. Bloom. I, Mr. Corley.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson, aye. Moving on to item number 10, finance and facilities. 10 A, fourth quarter cash report submitted by Ms. Wood. Anything more? Can we start with the? So this is the fourth quarter capture port that was sent into PED. God, we did it in July. It seems like it was long ago. It was just a couple of weeks ago. We're comparing this year, they ended in June 2024, to last year. They ended in June 2023. So with the expenses on the first. You don't. Okay, perfect. So with the expenses in district operational, we saw an increase of 5.4% this, this year compared to last year. In transportation, there was an increase in expense of 18.9%. The adware taxes in operations. That decreased, the expenditures decreased by 55% this year compared to last year. Student nutrition saw an increase of 22.7% in their expenses this year. There was an increase in athletic and non-budget expenses of 20%. The grants saw an increase of almost 15% in their expenses this year. Capital improvements, that was, that was a big one. They saw an increase in their expenses of 45%. Debt service saw a 1.4% decrease in expenses. And overall, the district saw an increase in expenses of 9.8% in 23, 24 when compared to 22, 23. Other questions? Um, so let's do revenue. So on our revenue. District operational saw an increase in revenue of 14.5% this year compared to last. Transportation saw an increase of 42% this year. The adware taxes received more money, 4.5% more money this year compared to last year. Student nutrition saw an increase of 23.5%. The athletic and non-budget funds saw an increase of revenue of 2.5% this year compared to last. The grants had an increase of 41.4%. The capital. Capital project funds had an increase of revenue of 8.2%. And the debt service saw an increase in their receipts of close to almost 5% or 4.9%. So overall, the district saw an increase in revenue of 17.7% in 23, 24 compared to 22, 23. Other questions for the revenue? Let's do cash. Our ending cash. District operational added $9 million to the $6.9 million that they had in 22, 23 with. So we are ending 23, 24 with $16.2 million in cash carryover with district operational. Transportation is adding $399,000 to their ending cash this year compared to last. The adware taxes, they're adding $476,000 to their ending cash this year. Last. Student nutrition saw a 32.7% increase in their remaining cash this year compared to last. Athletic and non-budget saw a decrease in their cash of 8.1% in 23, 24 compared to 22, 23. The grants saw a decrease in actually, they saw an increase in their cash of $5.5 million. The capital funds saw a decrease in their cash of $324,000. And debt service saw an increase in their ending cash of $292,000. So overall, the district added or ended the year with $15.8 million in cash carryover in 23, 24 compared to 22, 23. And I do have to point out that we always have the large loans for the reimbursement requests that were not paid before the end of the year. And last year, our loan to cover those outstanding reimbursement requests was $6.7 million. This year, it was $3.2 million. So PED is showing great improvement in getting us paid, getting the district paid. Are there questions on the ending cash?
So I have a question. Is there still $3.2 million outstanding?
At the end of, she, there was, no, they, they have paid most of it. I can't give you an exact number, but.
So that number is not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Questions? Thank you. Right, moving on. Can we be consideration to approve disposal of district vehicles?
So we, that finance committee presented to Board Member Big Williams, as well as the rest of the committee. The five vehicles, the life expectancies per district policy is 15 years, 150,000 miles or maintenance issues. All five of those vehicles leave that requirement. We go to auction versus trade. You just get more money to go back into our account. All funds go back to the ABA account to purchase more vehicles for the fleet or buses. Questions?
Madam President, Lisa Maxwell. On these cars under that they were 12 to 15 years old. Were they leased cars or are they purchased as a capital asset or?
They're purchased capital assets for the district. When we present what we're going to discard them, whether it's auction or all these vehicles are still functional, that's why they're going to auction.
So the account for that, yes, that I think in a prior meeting is just fund the funding, kind of, no loss.
No, they're fully depreciated by now.
By now, yeah.
Yes, finance committee that we recommend that we propose that these vehicles are not going to be auctioned.
Oh, and also, Madam President, Lisa Maxwell, the depreciation is straight, straight line if we take it out.
Yes, yes, it was just lying. And I think the life was, I think we had it five years.
Five years.
Okay, I make a motion that I recommend the board approve the disposal of the district that vehicles as presented.
I'll second that. Oh, even one second. Ms. Bloom. Roll call vote, Ms. McCall. I, Ms. Bloom. I, Mr. Corley.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. All right, moving on to item number 11, word of education, 11 A, consideration to group at the HHS Kelly Greens, the Nationals in February, September, eighth, 500,000.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the school board. Mr. Dill, I'm Michelle McGee. I am the head coach for the Farmington High School Kelly Greens. This is my eighth year coaching. This is Shawna Hall, my assistant coach, and I've had the pleasure of having her for seven years. And these are Kelly Greens that are here as well tonight. We thank you for your time tonight, and we just want her here to ask for approval for us to attend Nationals in 2025 of February. And you can see on the front of that paper, at the very top, is a short summary of our itinerary. We would depart FHS on February 12th after school. We would stay the night in Albuquerque where we would fly out of the next day to travel to Orlando, Florida. The Nationals event would go from Friday through Sunday. Monday, we would reserve as a celebration day, a fun day to be able to experience Magic Kingdom or Universal Studios after their hard work. And then we would travel back to school on Tuesday where we would attend on Wednesday. So we wouldn't miss four days of school. These ladies are prepared to do that. They carry an average GPA when we started the team of 3.83. So academics are not a problem and they can keep up with that. Some of the reasons we want to go to Nationals is there's many different reasons. It's an extraordinary team experience. We, I have the pleasure of taking our group in 2020. Shawna and I both went. Then we took our team. It's they, there is a different level of competition that they can strive for. It helps them to see the diversity of dancers and the talent among the United States. They compete at that higher level. They gain personal experience from in their dance skills as well as their knowledge of dance, their master classes that they receive that are all part of the registration for attending the Nationals. Just their personal experience to be able to travel with the team is, it's a lifelong memory. I can still remember when I traveled as a Kelly Green myself to Nationals many years ago and just what that did for me as a team member as well as an individual. They, they would love to represent Farmington High School as an ambassador and just at the, at this event. And it will help us to continue climbing. We placed sixth out of 21 teams last year at state. And so we hope that that will get us some more experience and just help us to reach that next level as a team. They did qualify for Nationals at their summer camp this year. They earned a superior rating as a team, which through Universal Dance Association. And I just, I think they would love this opportunity. They would gain so much from it. And so they are also happy to share their reasons with you. If you would like to hear from any of them as well.
Sure, right now, getting that experience.
I see what you're saying.
Call captain. Oh, wait, we don't call him captain. What do we call?
We do. Lacy's our first lieutenant.
First lieutenant is a, yes, not captain.
She's right there with her.
All right, let's go.
Hello. Um, I really think that it would be a really amazing opportunity for myself and for the team to attend Nationals. I've never got to experience it before. I've only ever been to the state level. So I think it will really help step up our game as a team. And it is before our state. So hopefully, like, this will really help us win at state. We're shining the wind, so, yeah. Maybe it'll be a really great experience.
Good job.
The other thing. This form just gives you a summary because Nationals is a very expensive event. It does give you a summary of our plan, just so that you know, we have that in place. We plan to fundraise in addition to the large fundraisers that we do already have as a team. We've discussed this as a team and with our parents. And they're ready, they're ready to work hard. They're ready to put the ones that we have into place and earn a little bit more, as well as we have a plan for some extra ones. And so we hope to gain your approval tonight and pay that deposit by November. That's it, thank you so much.
Any questions from the board?
So you're anticipating $30,000 for the full grant. How much of that are you fundraising?
It would be about $13,000 that we would be fundraising. And everything is projected on the high side of this. So we may be able to put a little bit more in from our club account that we have. And we just also finished another fundraiser that is not incorporated into this, that we just turned in on Monday, which will help, there will be some extra from that as well that goes into it.
Okay, Madam President, I recommend the board approve the FHS Kelly Greens trip to Nationals in February as presented.
Right motion? So move, next. All right, second.
Second, keep forward.
All right, roll call vote, Ms. McCall. I, Ms. Bloom. I, Mr. Corley.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson, aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another, we would be talking about the items, considering you're through. The. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, the Dr. Miss High School students to attend the National Johnson Valley Conference in Oklahoma, September 8th. And 2024 presented by Ms. Dennis.
So, thank you. Hi, Gattay. My name is Professor Dennison, and I teach the Napa indigenous at the Vista High School. And I've been there for six years. And I really enjoy it, teaching the Napa language. And I also run the indigenous club up there. And I work with the kids to to learn more about their culture. And last year, we were invited, we got invited to go down to Blackstown. And we were asked to perform cultural singing and dancing. And not knowing what we were going to do down there, we just, they learned to sing some songs and learned to dance some dances. And the people there, the audience, they really enjoyed the show. And they said that we had good energy and they enjoyed every bit of it. So coming back, I learned that we are, we were now invited to go to Oklahoma. The National JOM Conference that's going to be held in, during Oklahoma this September, this coming September, next month. So we've been invited, so we're going to take eight students with us. And this is my helper Glenda. And what we do is we perform singing and dancing. And there are several singing and dancing that we do. And we also get the audience involved in the singing and dancing. So that's what we are going to do. Okay, Gattay, Shae, Glenda, Harri, Shae. I'm the Native American Youth Advisor over at Pejota Vista High School. Good evening, good afternoon, Madam School Board President and School Board Members, Superintendent Deal, Mr. Parentone. I am going to present, like Ms. Dennis said, our students were invited to the National Johnson Valley Conference this year. And so it is a great honor for them. And I'm going to go ahead and talk about the itinerary. And I apologize, I don't have additional copies, so I'm going to go ahead and read what I have. And so so Sunday, we anticipate leaving from here at about 9:30 in the morning, kicking a bus to Durango Airport and flying out of Durango to Dallas Fort Worth. And then from there, we'll be traveling to Durant, Oklahoma, where we will be staying for a couple of days. So we anticipate being there September 8th, September 9th, and September 10th. So Monday, September 9th, the students will be performing for the National JOM Conference Evening Cultural Event Dinner. So they'll be performing before participants from all over the country. So different tribes will be, and butlers will be represented at that time. So our students will be able to share their little trip with everyone there, with all the participants. So it'll be a great experience for them. So and then Tuesday on September 10th, we will be flying out of Dallas Fort Worth back to Durango. And we should be getting back to where actually our point of departure and return is going to be here at the district office, just to let me know that. So we anticipate coming back at about 5:30 in the evening, so catching the bus back from Durango Airport back. So and we ask for your support and your vote. It'll be a great experience for our students. And it'll give them a chance to really be exposed to and communicate with other individuals from different tribes and different cultures. Are there any questions for any, either one of us?
I have a question in your mind. Oh, yeah, do we ever see anything like that?
Um, each year we have a Native American festival that's held here at, and last year we had it at San Juan College. Yes.
Does Johnson Valley JLM fund the trip?
Yes.
Fully? Kids don't raise money?
No.
Fully funded?
Exactly, yes, correct.
Okay, so this isn't expected to cost anything?
It is not expected to cost anything.
I'll add a comment. So I didn't have anything to think of last year, and I learned a lot. As you mentioned, just PM among other tribes and communities throughout the state. So it's a great opportunity. Ms. Maxwell is also going to be, I need to share. I'm the board session, an opportunity to also go, so.
Very nice. Any other?
Well, not.
Sure.
Uh, is it the same crew, the, the sang and danced as the Native American, senior Native American?
Yes, correct.
And the young freshman, what's his name?
Shaw Baker.
Is he going?
He will be, and yeah, I, the sophomore.
That's worth a trip, right there.
Exactly.
He was amazing.
All right.
They were all amazing, but, all right. Any other question?
Let me understand.
Okay. Um, so, Madam President, I recommend the board approve the PBHS students to attend the National Johnson Valley Conference in Durant, Oklahoma as presented.
Right motion?
So move, keep forward.
Second. Okay. All right, roll call vote, Ms. McCall. I, Ms. Bloom. I, Mr. Corley.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson, aye.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, action step policy, the 0200, your work, powers and responsibilities.
Yep, so this next whole section of policies were presented last month as reading editing steps. So tonight is the action portion of that, so. Portion of that, so. So the first one, be two hundred board powers and responsibility. Michelle, quickly. As presented last time, the change was controlling the addition of, or the striking of that language, keep scrolling. And the addition of that red language there, all by legislative action. Any questions? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B two hundred board powers and responsibilities as presented.
Right motion? So move, second, second, next. We'll follow them. Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I, moving on to the next one, action step policy B dash fourteen hundred super meetings.
Yep, added the language in red. As presented last month, any questions? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B fourteen hundred school board meetings as presented.
Right motion? Down second.
Second, keep forward.
Roll call vote, Ms. Ms. William, I, Ms. Corley.
I.
Action step policy B dash fifteen eighty one, executive session slash open meetings.
Any questions from? And just. Okay. Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B fifteen eighty one executive session slash open meetings as presented.
Right motion? Uh, second? Roll call vote, Ms. McCall. Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I. All right, next one, action step policy B dash sixteen fifty on future of board meetings.
Questions? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B sixteen fifty notification board meetings as presented.
Right motion?
So move, keep forward.
Second, thanks. Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I, instead of policy, the dash fifteen, the seventeen fifty. Agenda preparation and destination.
Any question? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B seventeen fifty agenda preparation and dissemination as presented.
Motion, so move, Max, all right, second.
Second, keep forward.
Right, roll call vote, Ms. McCall, I, Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I, action step policy B dash twenty one hundred minutes.
Any question? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B twenty one hundred minutes as presented.
Motion.
So move, keep forward.
Second. Roll call vote, Ms. McCall, I, Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I, action step policy B dash twenty one fifty public participation at board meetings.
Madam President? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B twenty one fifty public participation at board meetings as presented.
I have a question. Sorry, but. You mean you start giving no one cap for public comment?
We did.
We did, okay.
Great. Second, second, next one. Roll call vote, Ms. I, Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I, action step policies E dash zero hundred superintendent.
Any questions? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy C dash zero one hundred superintendent as presented. So move, keep forward.
Roll call vote, Ms. Ms. William, I, Ms. Dennis.
I.
Action step policy B dash thirty fifty for member development opportunities.
Yes. Any questions?
Two words.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. McCall.
You're welcome.
Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy B thirty two fifty for member development opportunities as presented.
So move, nice. Right. About seven. Roll call vote, Ms. I, Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I, in action step policy E dash eighteen eleven.
Any questions? Madam President, I recommend the board approve policy G dash one eight one one as presented.
Question? My question. Uh, second?
Second, keep forward.
Roll call vote, Ms. McCall, I, Ms. William, I, Mr. Corley.
I.
Ms. Johnson, I. We're getting started blending up. And so next is reading discussion step changes to policy that eleven hundred tobacco use by staff members.
So this is a reading editing step, so you know, we've had the twenty four seven group come before us. Several times in regards to our tobacco policy. We've been really good with them on our student policy, but they have over the last three or four years. Still do not like our policy for staff members, they've asked us to add in. Couple things, they want us to add at all times or twenty four seven. And they want us to add a section about referrals. Which we already do a good job with, with our, Mr. Patch does with our, our B lines, our, they play a certain program, so. That's what they would like to add to our group. So.
So this has been just on those. Yeah, I was on, that's the.
What do you mean?
The tobacco use of staff members, this was already in here, right? So where they can't, but then the whole red.
What's in red, and all they want to add is at all times or twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And then how we support them.
At all times on school grounds, building, court, like are we?
Yes.
Are we writing policies for their personal home?
No.
All right.
No, only on our. Our campuses, buildings, parking lots, playing fields, on our, in our buses, vehicles, or at school buses, at all time.
Madam President, Lisa Maxwell, I've been thinking about this since I saw this and remembering the hesitation. Is the intent of the students? To for the adults and kids to, to be an example by making this like a consequences. In compliance, or is this more like a, a policy where we're just setting example no matter if somebody sees us or not? And I go back to some like star tournaments, like you play a burial in the field, you're wide open. There's kids, there, you know, coaches, parents, whatever. Are they asking to be a twenty four seven example in places like that? Or is it just compliance for consequences here?
Is it repetitiveness, needs that you're done?
Uh, keep scrolling down here.
Yeah.
So you can't, you have tobacco on school premises, right, I mean, there's states that you can set up and. It's really just a heightened effort, I believe, to educate and say that we don't do that. Mr. Pat?
We would have no enforcement ability of our people. In burial, you would, if they worked for us, we would. But if they're wanting us to. Punish a parent or somebody else and they're not on our school grounds, we, we can't enforce something like that.
How do we enforce this currently?
We ask them. I don't know where, Glenda.
I mean, if our employee, I mean, there's, if it's a. Community member that steps away from the, in the parking lot and smoking a cigarette at halftime of the football game, we ask them to stop. Ask them to.
Typically, we ask them to leave the premises and.
But this is specifically for our employee.
Right. Okay, Madam President, Lisa Maxwell, so it's more like. Like this is a tobacco result or this is a. Maybe a team result or whatever, whatever current product developed, like. Something like that.
At all times.
At all times. That's why I was getting that.
At all times.
But when you write a policy at all times, it's part of the policy.
Well, I mean, I think so often you'll see, maybe not, I don't, I don't, I don't see that anymore, pardon me, but. When kids aren't present, maybe, you know, we have custodians who make smoke. Take smoke break at eight o'clock at night.
So I.
And they might think that's okay, no, it's not, they, they, all times, twenty four seven, on our grounds, buildings, parking lot, playing field. No smoking.
Okay.
That example. I guess my question was tobacco used by staff members slash smoking, is that, do the wars need to swing around somewhere up there? Tobacco slash smoking by staff members.
That's a good, I, I don't know, that's a policy service. I don't know. Like, like our former. Get rid of smoking against the tobacco use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, so. Baby, baby. And we can do that. Michelle? Will you make a note, will you make a note, or I will, Mr. Hash, remember, we're going to strike, we will just strike smoking and.
Oh.
Or just striking, it's striking.
That would cover it.
Sure. Do that?
Yeah, because the next sentence that starts off a policy says. They should be, you know, tobacco products, cigarettes, fifteen or quick retainers, so that we all cover the, the making.
Right. Well, you have a lot to conquer. Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on, for item number, do you have item number two, which is closed sessions. And we've not done a lot of closed sessions, so if I read this, you'll get everything. Farmington School Board vote during two closed sessions, going to. Then M does A, subsection ten dash fifteen dash. One H two, limited personnel matters to discuss complaints about free individual employees and we're going to say. Subsection ten dash fifteen dash one H seven for attorney, my group's communication regarding credit for a needed litigation.
So you need a motion to go on a closed session.
So I know we're, we're going to close session. Be by, Ms. William, second, second, Maxwell, roll call vote. Uh, this. McCall? Ms. William? Mr. Corley?
I.
Ms. Johnson? And.